All this workshop to order. We have a couple of items on the agenda to discuss and a couple of housekeeping duties before we start.
Yes, ma'am. Let us pray Father God Almighty who we love, who we trust, we thank you for this potion of the day as the sun begin to go down. We ask you to hold us in the shadow of your love. We ask you to continue to hold Veniceville in the shadow of your love, our county that we are going through, we are gonna get through because we are believers in the Lord our Savior Jesus Christ. Continue to bless all our workers, all our members and all our body that have come together here to educate ourselves and do diligent work. It get hard sometime, but God, we ask you to give us strength, give us strength that we continue to go through. Our police department and all our department, God, give them strength that they will be able to waddle through this tough time that we're going through. You didn't take it this far to leave us right now and we just believe it. We thank you for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. 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 Praise the Lord.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Taylor and Ms. Quick are not here yet. We don't know they will, we haven't heard from them, but we're gonna start. We have a call. A couple of housekeeping things is recommended that we have a workshop on Tuesday, October sixth at four thirty to review all the city's boards and commissions. A brief explanation of what's the responsibility of the duties for each commission, who will be currently appointed and what vacancies occur. And we did add that here, we have quite enough for today, but there are like myself and the other two new members of council. We need to understand exactly. For me with a couple of members, not all of them, that's agreeable. If you check with the schedule.
What's the date again?
October sixth, the first Tuesday in the month of October. Double check your calendars. Yes, please. Is that be okay for you? Mr. Scott, sir?
Yeah, I might add that in the reason for that is so that hopefully we can get those appointments back on that October.
But me, yes.
So that you can go ahead with your appointments.
We got a couple that are pinned in on the table.
At four thirty?
Yes, sir.
We should be out at six.
Yes, sir, okay.
That's three.
After about an hour.
Yes, ma'am.
People's eyes tend to glaze over their attention speaking personally. Alright, thank you. So we will let the board members, the council members who are not here, that we are agreeing to that. And if we need to make any changes for whatever reason, we'll have Mr. Maxwell let us know. The second thing of housekeeping, I am asking that you be in favor of moving our October twentieth council meeting. Either to that Wednesday, the twenty first, and some people have reservations about a Wednesday because it is. Some churches or people are having Bible study and if not, that twenty first and the following Thursday would be the twenty seventh. This will be able to accommodate some issues that we're having and Mr. Alderman will not be in town and I think it's important that we have him here. Twenty first that Wednesday or the twenty seventh of October on Tuesday. Not as to conflict with any religious obligations on the twenty first.
Just go with twenty first.
Alright, twenty first. Thank you. And Mr. Alderman, you please let Mr. Taylor and Ms. Quick know that we're going to, we need to, we need to vote. I'd like to entertain a motion that we move the regular, the date for the regular scheduled October meeting from the twentieth of October to Wednesday, the twenty first of October at the regular time, six thirty, to accommodate a necessary change in schedule by the administrator. I recommend you moving.
Yeah, move.
Alright, and Mr. Abraham is seconding. It has been moved and seconded that we move our October meeting to the twenty first. I would in favor of that, you know, by raising your right hand. Thank you. Let the record show that unanimous. Vote of five. Alright, thank you so much for your.
I don't thank you.
Understanding. Alright, now business at hand. Review the mobile home ordinance. Ms. Holly, do you want to make a brief presentation or for people that ask about mobile homes? You wanna present to us your questions or comments and then if you need some explanation, if Holly can let us know what's, what's on your mind. Who, was it you, Mr. Scott? And asked about mobile homes?
It was me that asked.
Okay.
You was asking which one is she wanting to present?
No, 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 she doesn't know what to present. I'm gonna put her on the spot.
Okay. No, what I wanted to know, and I was looking at the ordinance and I came across same thing that you gave us in the handout. About a mobile, mobile park. And like I'm saying, and I wanna know about mobile homes if, in some areas, like I was saying. In some areas, some of the residents that live there were saying that they already have mobile homes in those areas. And nobody is gonna come, and I might be stretching it, somebody might, but what they were saying that in the area that they live in, no one is gonna come in that area and build a hundred thousand dollar home. And they was wondering, instead of them looking at grass and trees that if someone wanted to come there and put a mobile home there, just, just in the area that, that we are talking about. Because a lot of them saying if they didn't have things to hold them here, they wouldn't even be in that area. And I don't want to lose a whole section. Because right now, and, and I asked Holly to give me the information on the last permit that they have for building a, a home in that area for the last, I believe, like five years I had, and there was like one. And it was a modular home that was put in those areas. And we might go back further than that. And what I'm saying, the growth is limited. And I just wanted to know if there's an ordinance that would keep someone from, if they purchased a property, that they can put a mobile home there.
I have a question for you. I don't have the answer to that. You've mentioned that there are already existing mobile homes in the area. Are they occupied?
Yes.
But they're not being kept?
No, that they are being kept. They'll be, those mobile homes are being kept.
Right.
But what they are saying is the property beside them.
They want to add another mobile home.
No, no. What they are saying is that, let me see what this. They're saying that they already have mobile homes in the area that people are living in. But they also have these vacant lots that have trees and shrubbery grown. And people been asking, can they put mobile homes there?
Right.
And they're saying, in that area, I'm saying, I'm not saying going citywide, but they're saying it is, they wouldn't mind seeing trailers that they put in there with standards, not bringing anything in. But have certain standards there. It, it's, it's better than looking at shrubbery and trees and, and all those things and, and that sort of. But yeah, they have trailers already there.
They want to know additional ones coming on the existing lots that are there.
Right.
As far as my remem- remembers goes back when I was on the planning commission and ordinance was passed that no more mobile homes can be placed in the city land. So the ones that are there are grandfathered in. And the ordinance, if I remember correctly, if somebody moves out of one, there was certain number of days to replace it. And a short period of time to replace an existing, on an existing lot where an existing mobile home was, but no new mobile homes.
Okay, is that on? Do we have that on?
Uh, it's there somewhere, but it will take a cha- an ordinance change or a new ordinance by.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
If a mobile home is currently inside the city and someone's living in it, then it is considered a nonconforming use. If that mobile home is there and it's owner occupied and they wanna buy another one and bring it in to switch it out, they can do that.
Right.
If the property is vacant, and this is any nonconforming use, not just mobile homes, but if property is vacant for a hundred and twenty days, then it's considered a nonconforming use and they can't move back in it. Now.
Okay, let's, let's, oh, is it, is it considered a what now?
A nonconforming use.
And that means that?
That means that it's not allowed in that district.
Okay.
Um, same question, uh, somebody moved out there and there's over a hundred and twenty days of trailers there and, uh, same question if you wanna make an office out of it. I mean, you don't wanna home anymore.
No, sir.
Can you make an office?
Mobile homes are not allowed at all.
I had that question, so now you answer. Somebody that asked me about that.
Well, yes, if they be putting a business in a mobile home.
A business?
You said a office, that's a business.
Uh, most likely the zoning district's not for businesses anyway. Where the, wherever the mobile home is currently. Most likely you're not gonna be able to put the business there at all, period. Even if you demolish a trailer and put a house there or build an office there. If the zoning district doesn't allow it, then you're not able to do it. So depending on where it is. Now what area are you talking about?
I'm talking about.
Specifically.
Um, the area on the mill farm from, I believe, Bird's Hill from that corner down.
Okay, and that's a lot of unknown property back there?
Yeah, they have. They have some.
Well, in, in my experience, the last nineteen years, of course, in nineteen ninety-nine is when the actual, um, ordinance to, uh, the test area came into effect.
Right.
Um, and that was part of the mill farm, the test area.
And that was the last area that they, because it was.
You could allow it, correct. Um, in those nineteen years, well, in the nineteen years that I've been here, of course, this went into effect in nineteen ninety-nine. But the nineteen years that I've been here, there's only been two mobile homes put down in that area. Um, and they've been on vacant lots that have already been cleared. We just recently removed the mobile homes from that area. We did, we decided to discontinue the test area in two thousand fifteen. So from two, I was, came in two thousand one, from two thousand one, two thousand fifteen, we had three mobile homes.
You had three mobile homes that wanted to.
We had three mobile homes placed in that area, yes. And one was on the same lot. Two were on the same lot. So one moved out and one moved back in.
Okay, but, but I, I just wanted to, you know, like we discussing this, why was the, um, ordinance brought up? So I mean, why? Why, I mean, why did we decide not to put mobile homes in, in, in certain areas? Because was there's a safety risk or?
If I can remember, because I was on the planning commission, uh, a lot of them, and I can't pretend which areas were unkept or people would just move away and abandon them and leave them and then the city had the responsibility to, you know, try to haul them off of the program and complaints from citizens in the area. So.
Complaints?
Yes, because in my neighborhood, a couple of blocks away from where I live, there's one that's fallen down. It was used, it may still be used by a church group, I'm not sure, but they don't keep the grass mowed and, you know, it's, it's an asshole. I don't complain.
Well, we have, I saw one that, uh, that a house.
Okay.
And on the other hand, like you said, you having complaints in that time for them to remove the trailers. Now we having people that want to move trailers back into their area.
Were you on, uh, city council in nineteen ninety-nine?
None of us were here. Maybe you, John, I mean, you.
What was the question?
Nineteen ninety-nine? I don't think so. I didn't keep all my minutes or whatever.
That's the issue that people have to come and address council.
And, and you know, now you do have, you know, the makeup, the, um, the homes and stuff, they, you know, they're better quality now. And, and also what I was saying is that, or we would be saying, is that we have standards for the trailers that we were bringing. And like, they would have to be underpinned. They would have to have certain, you know, certain models and things like that. Not bringing anything that you can.
We have that, we have that.
We have that, yeah.
For, whether it's a mobile home park or somebody is pulling, if they're replacing a current mobile home, there are standards in place and we give by the hood standards. And of course it has to be underpinned and on a foundation, etc.
Is there also a lot size requirement?
There is a lot size requirement, there's a mobile home size requirement, and you have to have a front porch on it.
Is there a year?
There is a year. However, I would recommend if, and this is my recommendation, and if you decided to, to open the test area back up, I would recommend making mobile homes no older than twenty years old. Because currently you can put a nineteen ninety, uh, nineteen seventy-six in. If it's a double wide and it meets, you know, it's got, you gotta have a pitched roof. Um, etc. So I just personally, if you decide to go back with the test area, I would recommend that you do an age limit.
A modular?
Well, no, a modular, a modular and a mobile home are, are really different. Yeah, because it's actually a stick-built house, but it's built in a factory.
Uh, when you say test, what, I'm kinda confused.
The test area. We, they stopped moving homes long before nineteen ninety-nine from coming inside the city. In nineteen ninety-nine, the planning, it went before the planning commission. I don't have the council minutes, but I do have the planning commission minutes. It came before the council minutes, or I mean, the planning commission to, um, to have mobile homes allowed in the A three and A four zoning districts. Um, at that council, at that planning commission meeting, they said, well, let's do a test area first and see if that works. So the test area lasted sixteen years. In sixteen years, there were three mobile homes placed. And they had, um, they decided to do it in the mill farm. And there's actual map, I have a map. But they did the mill farm at that meeting and that's what they suggested the city council was to make the test area in that area. And it wasn't all of the mill farm, it was only certain streets.
And you wouldn't, I wouldn't think that you would wanna change an ordinance unless that whole area, that community, everybody that owns property would be in agreement with it.
Well, if we went through the process, I've kind of hearing Holly tells that there is an option of being a trial test for, in that particular desire to, to make it a little more flexible or a mobile home can yet be strictly compared, compared to what it is. That orders to take to readings and advertise and public input so that.
Yeah, and I understand that it would be not, you know, for the paper and everything, but people, a lot of people don't, wouldn't catch it. We found that a lot of times. I would think that the community would need to be contacted, its owners, to see if they agree with that.
It may be necessary to have a public area.
It is. It would actually go before the planning commission before it came to the city council. And they would recommend what they, they would be footwork and.
Right, so they could say, give the center level to everybody in the, in the area that's supposed to be a test area to make sure people, and they make the recommendation to council.
And, you know, if it's a test area, like you were saying, when they did have, they only had three manufacturing homes that came in. If nobody wants to bring a trailer, there's no home. But if we do, you know, get trailers that are within standard and, um, you know, I, I think it'd be good on both sides. But, but I, if we need to get the people in that area, I agree with you on that. But only thing that I'm concerned about too, when you say that people that own property, you got people that own property and that area is not keeping it up.
But that's something, that's a separate.
No, 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 it's not. If, if you saying you gonna contact every person that own property there, they own property there.
Right, what does that have to do about allowing mobile homes?
Because if they said no, if you don't clean up your own property. Right, how you gonna vote on something coming in?
But that's, hello, that's two separate, I hear what you're saying, but that's two separate issues. I mean, it really is. And, 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 well, no, 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 and, and, um, talking about zoning issues, uh, I'm gonna say it now since this is coming up. Because there are questions about some of our zoning ordinances that we've come in to realize, take a look at, that I'm going to recommend that, um, uh, we have the Public Service Committee take a look at zoning ordinances that we're having trouble with that aren't being enforced or may need to be changed or whatever, and then bring that back to us. And certainly what we have on board for keeping up property and abandoning property, those kind of things, those are some major zoning issues that I have questions about. Are our zoning laws stringent enough? How to be tweaking, those kinds of things? Would that help you get past this?
Certainly, ma'am, may that, that, that's great.
Alright, so while we on that, let me say this, that, um, if you have specific questions like dilapidated houses and lots or whatever, kind of jot down your questions that you want the committee to take a look at, and that committee is Ms. Quick and Mr. Abraham. And maybe by next week gets either given to him or to her or to me, and then we'll meet and we'll go through and take a look. We refer, contact and get some feedback from Holly, and then the committee can make a report back to council. That, that work? Want to give everybody a voice. We have a, we have a system in place to address these kinds of things without trying to hash it out two or three hours. You know, because we get, we get from one thing, we go into something else and everything is recorded.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay. Alright, and tonight, we can't, we have a workshop, we can't, um, not make an agreement or anything, we just have a workshop.
Oh, I, I, I just throwing out ideas and things that, you know, let me say this, I'm just throwing out suggestions that people my resident that, that asked me about.
And that's important.
Yeah, and I, you know, um, I'm not saying I don't have a dog in the fight, but I accept any decision that comes back. I'm just explaining what I was, you know.
Would you represent this way?
Right, that's what I'm saying. If you say no, I don't know as an answer. If the county, you know, if the council come with a vote that says, we're not gonna do this, I can accept no for an answer. That's, that's what I'm saying. It's not that, um, it, you know, it's, it's whole hogging none.
But it's, it's not quite as cut and dry as that. My next thing is, do you want the planning commission to take a look at this?
I, I certainly do, ma'am, ma'am.
So can we ask Ms. Holly to do that? Ask the planning commission to take a look at the current zoning about mobile homes and what would their people in this community who may be interested in another test case? What would that look like? What would be required? Because we have people who are concerned about their neighborhood and some of them are saying we want to allow mobile homes in. So I think the next step would be the planning commission take a look, meet, discuss, and get back to council. Yes, sir.
I would ask that maybe we could be more specific to the commission and telling them what we're, the council is considering like the test area. And then, uh, I think we'd need a vote on that to then refer that to the planning commission with a specific, uh, question about what would be involved in reestablishing the test area. That would be, I think, a good agenda to refer to the planning commission. Do you, you agree with that?
Sure.
Okay, and you think that our next city council meeting?
I think you agree.
Alright. Alright.
Ma'am, may I also move that we refer this over to our zoning committee, um, to see what it would take, um, to do a proper testing for having trailers in, in that area?
Um, can we add that details or what you're moving will be discussed or recommended by Mr. Alderman and Holly? Because he wanted more specific information.
Okay.
Does that help you out, Holly?
Um, sure.
Well, wait, 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 please. Go ahead, Holly.
No, I didn't have anything to say. That was her.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Is this the only area that we're speaking about?
Yes.
Yes, just, just that area.
Is it?
Well, I would like to, you can say for the test area also down, down west area as well.
I should also say.
Alright, let us, let us discuss this at the Public Service Committee meeting, but we can only have three council people there. So Mr. Scott, they're members. And we're gonna meet, we're gonna meet maybe by next week one day, and we'll have some specific things that we're gonna ask the planning commission to do rather than trying to do hedge pods right now and not be clear about what we've done. Okay, so let's, let's our committee, the committee meet and draw up some recommendations to present to the planning commission to move forward on this. There's no need to try to rush stuff or we don't know what we doing and make sure that we don't have everything down in detail. There may be a limit on the test area, we don't know.
It might be.
So let us meet and we'll ask, certainly, Holly's gonna be at that meeting and we will take this under consideration in addition to, um, some other things. That work?
That sounds good.
Okay, so we don't need to, we don't need to vote on that because we're gonna meet and have a discussion in the meeting.
I would grow a mood.
Okay, anything else about mobile homes? That's it, alright. Next, the review of streets and sidewalk ordinance information from chapter ninety-five, which is included in the packet. There have been some concerns and complaints about certain businesses. There may be some other things from what I've been told and what I've heard from people. Certain businesses in our downtown area with things on the sidewalk that could be a hazard to people walking or whatever reason. And if you would look at the packet, it says, chapter ninety-five, streets and sidewalks. I don't think you have a chance to read it, but there are clear rules and regulations about what can be on the street or sidewalk in front of a place of business and the penalties thereof. So it's open for discussion. I don't know who asked for this to be on the agenda, but here it is.
Okay, I asked about the mobile home.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I did ask about some.
I don't know.
Sidewalks and streets, all this, this, all together, uh, I have some, like, issues with the street. I've always had issue with the street that they are, especially state streets, uh, the D O P, all in that area, it's whole. There's gravel out and there's also, we have a lot of drainage, uh, that goes along the distance, drainage goes along the distance.
Does that go along with this, do the drains go along with this too? No, okay. This street ain't okay.
Let me, let me.
I think we had a question about the damage.
Oh, well, that's about the tree that was on the sidewalk, the big tree that was raising up the sidewalk.
And then some other, there is a business, there are a couple of businesses that are in the downtown area that have things outside their place of business.
There are several.
If you look on page.
Several businesses.
Yes, ma'am. Page third, the first page, item ninety-two point zero two, placing tables, glass, and other light on streets. It is, let me finish, please. It shall be unlawful for any person to erect or maintain any stand, booth, table, or other thing upon sidewalk in nearby street for the purpose of selling or offering for sale any goods, wares, merchandise, fruit, vegetables, except maybe provided whereas in this code. Okay, that's throwing things in the street. I'm on the first page. Ninety-five point zero two, under item eight. That's considered obstruction. And under ninety-five point zero one, unlawful for any person to obstruct the street or sidewalk by placing any vehicle or piling their own or otherwise placing any timber, lumber, bricks, dirt, or other materials unless permission is first obtained. Subject to the rules and regulations that may be prescribed. It shall not be lawful for any person to obstruct a sidewalk or the streets of the city by placing their own merchandise, barrels, boxes, or other things.
Mayor, what has been the complaint?
That the stuff is on the sidewalk and it's in the way.
In particular?
Several.
Well, I have things in front of my shop and they've been there for a hundred years. And, I mean, I had planned to move them. But they're not in the way, I made sure of that. And we discussed this a long time back. And a lot of this came up after Melissa came downtown. And I know, I mean, she even said this to me. Because, I mean, Holly's sitting there, but Holly said, well, we've got a member on the council that's got things on the street. But anyway, it's very inviting to see planters and stuff, I think, on the street. We probably do need to change that. But where I think it's coming in is she has things way out in the street and will move them. So I think there's a way we can make some sort of adjustment here. Because it looks nice to see a plant or something with flowers in it. They're invited, I think. But you can't get out too far in the street where people cannot walk. But I, I.
When someone trips or stumbles. Or someone trips or stumbles, we're liable, we're liable. Your hand was up, sir.
Yeah, and, and I believe the, the first part, A, is it for the purpose of selling. And, and what you're talking about is not for the purpose of selling, right?
Yeah.
But it, but we do have for the purpose of selling items and those items are on the sidewalk. And I know there was a, um,